I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Special Meeting. Today's Wednesday, September 20th, 2017, and the time is 7 o'clock. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendment, addition of item 8K, safer grant for our department.
Second. Oh, it would be eight.
H I J K L.
Oh, excuse me, L.
I'm in my second.
I was given bum information.
You were. Okay, with that, was there a second on it?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment on items not on the agenda, Ron?
Just a quick update on the bond. If you've been out to Seymour, we've got two of the four baseball fields complete with new fences. The other two should be done in a couple of weeks. Stony Lake, if you go by there, they milled the parking lot, the drive down to the boat launch last week, new retaining rock wall down at the boat launch, and now we'll have four trailer places down there so people don't have to walk down the hill. All the ADA sidewalks are done at the Stony. Met with the painter to paint the pavilions. That'll probably be next spring because of the weather, we're not sure. All the pavilions have been re-ruffed, fascias all steel, soffits all steel, everything's been wrapped. So, we're probably 75% done with our bond projects, which is pretty incredible when you consider what we took on with that and moving our offices. And then lastly, we met with Lieutenant Patterson today. The Boo Bash is coming again, that's the big lacrosse term. We get people from the Midwest and Canada. That'll be October 28th and 29th, and we're expecting over 6,000 people at Seymour. So, that's a nice shot in the economy in our community. So, that's it. Thanks.
Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Moving on. There's no unfinished business. Let's go on to the public hearing for the truth in budgeting.
I move to open the truth and budgeting public hearing at 7:02 PM to discuss our property tax millage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budgets for the following: 2018 general fund 101 budget, 2018 police contracting 205 budget, 2018 parks and recreation 208 budget, and 2018 fire department operations EMS life support 213 budget.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open to the public? Evan? Or, excuse me, Susan? Can I preface this, because I know what you're going to talk about?
Okay.
The reason they're there is I went to a meeting the other day with the people that are trying to organize and get some sort of semblance of order about the work that's going to be done in 2019 on the roadwork on M24. You know, it's important that we get all of our ducks in a row, it's going to be quite a disruption. And at that meeting, I spoke to them only as Bill Dunn. There was no promises made, there was no monetary amount, but I did suggest that they approach the township board and maybe request some money because they need some to complete a lot of the work downtown. So, with that, again, I made no promises on money or roadwork or whatever. Susan?
Gosh, you took all the words right out of my mouth.
No, but, please, please state your name.
I'm Susan Basardet, president of the Oxford Village Council, and I am a member of the M24 Task Force along with about 18 other people that are trying to get organized and work through the big project that we have come on in the spring of 2019. It was supposed to be a shelf project originally, and so everybody was kind of taking their time doing it, including MDOT, and all of a sudden, a year ago, the state came forward and said, "Oh, you have money? Get busy, because it's coming in 19." So, we have been without a lot of information currently because MDOT, like us, is behind the eight ball, and everybody is scrambling to get the project and get plans together. So, they're starting to kind of jowl a little bit. We've had several meetings with MDOT and Pontiac. Pete has been to almost all of them, I think, as I am the village manager and our former village manager. Bill's been to a couple of them. The engineers, Jim Sharp has been to several. Chris Corey from the village has been there. And so, what we want to do tonight, after Bill made that remark, is we wanted to come and do a presentation to you. We've got a little handout. This plan that I'm going to show you is fluid. It is by no means permanent in any way, shape, or form, but we're nearing a shape and form. And so, I'm going to pass it out while Evan starts going through some things. Thank you for listening, Bill.
State your name, please.
Evan Teach, I'm the interim village manager for the village of Oxford. As the mayor passes out those sheets again, what you'll see in the plans are representations of the types of things that the village is looking to purchase for the streetscape and the betterment for pedestrians and the look and feel of downtown Oxford adjacent to the road. For those who may not know the plan, the Michigan Department of Transportation is coming in, and they are doing basically a sidewalk-to-sidewalk reconstruction, I shouldn't even say sidewalk, business front-to-business front reconstruction of M24. So, new sidewalks, new curb, the parking that's along M24 that's in the village, lighting, you name it, curb to curb beyond. So, one of the things that they do have is a grant program. They ask for a 30% match from the municipality to have these things. The street parking is not replaced by MDOT at their cost, it's replaced at the village's cost because they normally don't have parking on state routes of that nature. So, that's one thing. They will replace the sidewalk, but if you want a nicer sidewalk, you have to pay the upcharge. So, we are putting together a grant request, and with that, we are also asking the township to consider contributing to that grant request so that we can get a lot more done with more money to be able to do the 30% match. As you'll see, as I mentioned, we are looking to improve the pedestrian crossings across M24. In that plan, you'll see a middle median that will have an island of refuge in it that allows people to get to the middle of the road and be safe in between a stopping point that's about 11 feet wide and about 10 feet deep so people could stand there and then move on to the other side of the road. We are looking to have two of those, plus Washington and Berdick, one on the south end, Washington and Berdick, and then at First Street. We are really looking at how to create a sense of place along Washington Street and M24. Everybody who's been there, it's a happening place, it's a great place to be, but with the traffic and the speed, what we're trying to do is figure out what can slow down the traffic, the lane width, and then as you start getting into the parking areas and beyond, trees, some furniture, giving people a sense that they're safer up on the curb and not so much, and giving them a place that they want to be in versus not want to be in. We all know that a lot of people use the backs where all the parking is, but there is and should be life along the street frontage as well, and those types of things the state does not pay for. We are looking to and have to replace the existing parking that I mentioned. They will build it, and you just have to pay for the pavement for it, but that's just part of what we are doing. We are looking to bring in better lighting down there and space out the lighting along M24 so that it covers more of the downtown area, not just the first couple blocks. And then, we are looking to put in new mast arms across Washington and Berdick. As you now know, they have the lights that are on the wires. We think having a pole with a proper mast arm and have to, and maybe even have it lit so that you could see the street names would be a nice touch in the downtown. And then also, we just also want to get the word out to the public that this is coming in 19, and those businesses down there need all the support that they can get during construction. They will be open, you will be able to park in the back parking lots, but for a good nine months, that road will be under construction, and those businesses are going to be hurting and could use their resident support. So, anytime we can get the word out and get good people to understand that, yeah, it may be a little bit troublesome and dusty to get down there, but think about those businesses because they're going through it too every day, and they need their customers. I'm here to answer any questions.
I'd like to just make a statement that, you know, at that meeting, I represented just myself.
That's correct, sir.
I did not represent this board, but one thing I did mention is, is my opinion that a vital downtown is so important to a community. It increases property values. There are areas like Novi, Auburn Hills, that are spending millions and millions to try to create a downtown, a downtown feel. And that's why I think it's important that the village, being part of the township, that if nothing else, at least we consider possibly helping out the village. The township board has been very generous with their handouts. We've handed out money to the Fire Hall, to Park and Rec, to MERS, and if they can see it in their plans, maybe give a little money to revitalize downtown. I also said, I don't want a nickel going for projects that belong to the MDOT.
Sure.
You know, their money should take care of their roads, just like we pretty much tell the county that, you know, we don't own a road.
I understand.
Jack?
Yeah, I've been to several of those meetings also with Bill and Jim and Sue, and additionally to that, two things. One, we were at an Oakland County planners' meeting, Deanna and I, we had the opportunity to meet at Leader Dogs for the Blind, and talking about ADA crossings and talking about ADA paths and ramps. One of the concerns was, we are having safety paths installed on each side of M24 through the township. Now, what does that do? Does that stop right there at the village line and we don't have the funds to do a nice sidewalk?
Good, good point. The plan and the state has requirements to put those ADA ramps in. They also have the countdown, things on the ped walks. Those are requirements now, but we will insist that they be there, and if there is an upcharge, we will have that part of the plan.
Well, and again, to this hundred and...
Sir, we want it to be a walkable downtown, friendly to all.
I understand that, and that's where I'm going with this. I'm the Economic Development Subcommittee Chairman. We deal with all of the people in the township and the village, and what I see here is, we use this as one of our jewels, our parks, our fire department, the downtown. What I all of a sudden envisioned was, here's a nice safety path and it stops, and then it convenes into something. If we were to help contribute towards garnering this $300,000 grant that the state of Michigan, by upping it by $150,000 for these downtown improvements, we would address those kind of things if I were to agree to help in that instance.
If I'm catching you correctly, you would have some wants for those monies to make sure that they're in the plan. If that is the case, we will work with you. One, maybe a response, Mr. Dunn, we're not looking necessarily for a handout, we're looking for a partner, and we want to partner with you on this, and those types of issues we'd like to hear and put it in the plan. We're somewhat late, but not late enough not to get some of these things into that final plan.
It would be a shame to have all the state money and local money not do a good job just because of lack of funds. If we're going to mess up the downtown for a year, let's do it right and do it right the first time.
Very much agree. Very much agree.
Joe?
The sentiment, everything, I agree with the sentiment, however, I don't believe it's legal. Township can't give away its money to another government. I think if you check into this, we've looked at this probably in the 90s, I don't think it's legal. It's a good concept, I like the concept, but I think what they're going to say is the village has its issues, we have our issues. I think what the village should look at is a bond, some type of a bonding structure to raise that money and to pay back over time, just like we did with the Parks and Rec.
I'm not from Michigan, but that road runs right through the township.
Understood.
And so, there are segments of the township.
And I think the village is part of the township.
Yeah, but I think if you look at legalese on this, I think they're going to say that's not allowed.
Joe, your past history on being an attorney, again, is not real good.
Go and check it out.
Well, that's what we could do, is we could check it out.
Yeah, the suggestions would be is to check it out first.
You have to.
Well, first of all, they're requesting that we consider it. It might not happen tonight, but we will take note and try to help if we get enough votes.
Hopefully.
Okay, Aldridge?
I just wanted to say that this is an opportunity that actually comes along to the township and the village once in a lifetime. Whatever they do in order to put this together, I think they're talking over $700,000, or $2 million, $2.5 million for a total project, is going to impact the village, the amount of business that we get through the village, it's going to impact the township as well. As you pointed out so well, that we're part of the township, the village is part of the township, and township is part of the village. So, if there's any way that this could go forward, I certainly would, you know, encourage it.
Okay, thanks, Will.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And it doesn't have to end tonight. If you have any other questions, call the village, I'll...
I'm sure we'll have questions. Maybe we will check on the legality.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I hope you won't mind if we don't stay the entire meeting.
I do mind, but that's all right.
Not bitter.
Okay, let's move on to the real important stuff. Back to the public hearing. Is there any questions on the four general fund or police, park and rec, or fire operating budgets?
I move to close the truth and budgeting public hearing at 7:18 PM to discuss the property tax millage rates proposed to be levied to support the proposed budgets for the following: 2018 general fund 101 budget, 2018 police contracting 205 budget, 2018 police parks recreation 208 budget, 2018 fire department operations 213 budget.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's move on. On to Oakland County Sheriff's Department, 2018 rental. I believe we were passed out something about the, this looks like a Curtis Wright spreadsheet.
Yes. It is a spreadsheet. That is an updated cost of expenses since the sheriff's substation's been open at the township, which was March of 15. So, you're using the 2015 total year, so it gets you approximate to what has been spent on the township building, and then there's some of the expenses that goes along with the operation of the building.
Do you have these? Yeah, why don't you put that up there? Not telling me what to do. Yes, I am. This is the same thing we're looking at here, the operating expenses. Where did you come up with the 7426, Curtis?
The square footage of the building, based upon when we had the addition put on and also the original building. So, those were the square footages of the building. If you want to see the breakdown of the four areas, I can bring that up. I guess we can. Deanna, what do we charge the village from that per square foot? To rent?
What do we charge a treasurer?
That's different, it's not a different fund.
What do we charge the clerk?
Out of the general fund.
I'm just going there.
It's not general fund.
I don't care, it's a township hall.
No, it's different.
You're in it.
Square footage is...
It's square footage you occupy.
No, it's different because they're different millage sources. Building permits its own fund, its own operation.
You can talk to, you're blue in the face, but this is a different millage, you're in a different millage. The building department is almost self-funding, and here we are talking about what they pay rent and this pay rent.
It's got to be fair.
That's right. So, you start paying rent out of treasuries, but...
Let's be gentle in the playground here.
You understand that concept.
I understand the concept.
I do have the square footages here from the board packet, but you have it divided into four different categories. 43% for township, 14% for the meeting room, 17% for storage area, and 26% for substation. My question is, the total utilities and additional expenses comes to $11,434, and part of the whole thing, years ago, when we discussed, when you discussed or the board discussed building a substation, was, the big fight was to get rid of that rent fee, to get that monkey off our back so we wouldn't have such a high rent, and we're within $5,000 of what we were paying at the other place.
What does that mean, that $5,000 of the other place could you...
Well, we paid 35 at the other place.
We paid 18 at the other place. Let me give you a little background on that. When the economy was doing fine, Bob Turner charges $36,000. I went to Bob Turner and goes, "Well, we may have to move because I can, know I can get other pla..." He goes, "Don't even go there. He goes, "I'll charge you $18,000." And there was probably a few years there from 2007 or '08 to when we moved here that it was $18,000. Is that true, Deanna?
So, we'd almost have been better to have left our substation there if we're going to charge them $30,000.
Well, I'm not suggesting we charge them $30,000.
Okay.
I'm going to suggest we charge them $18,000.
The additional expense is $11,434. $15,000, $18,000 is a lot more reasonable than $30,000.
I would never agree with 30.
Okay. Well, 30 is what was last year, what was charged last year, to last year's budget.
Jack?
Yeah, you know where I stand in this. We moved them over here so that we wouldn't have that monies coming out of our policing budget for rent so that we could have more police in a civilized area to live in because that really was a toilet at $18,000 a year. Paying their expenses, the rent would be $1,000 per month. Now, what happens to everything above and over the expenses? If you were to charge $1,500 a month, where would the $500 go? It's a question stating that we are taking millage money for the police and putting it where?
In the general fund.
That's not what I voted for. No.
Well, what is the board's pleasure?
I'd think $1,000 per month covers the operating expenses for the sheriff at Curtis Wright's, 26% for the substation.
I would suggest going to $1,200 a month, just based on utilities and such increasing. You know, I mean, that's always, that's always around the bend.
I'm sorry, what is the square footage?
Of the substation?
Yeah.
Well, it's 20%...
Got to be around $3,000.
It's 4,192.
Oh, that's quite a bit.
Okay.
But the township building is 7,012. The meeting room is 2350, and the storage area is 2820.
So, what is their actual space that they're utilizing?
4,192.
4,192. Okay. And you're saying $1,000 a month?
Well, I think 1,200, just because utilities may increase.
So, if we set it at $15,000, it sounds like the board's in favor of moving forward. 1,200 is 14,400 a year.
I'll make a motion, we make it $15,000 per year.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Let's move on. Onto, let's go on to the budgets. Let's do the fire EMS and advanced life support. Is there any questions on this, or is there a motion?
I move to approve the recommended 2018 fire operations EMS ALS budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $3,000,094,708, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at 3.4008 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
3.4008. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. Park and rec.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended 2018 parks and recreation budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $1,000,262,720, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at .8295 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Bye, Ron. General fund. Any questions on the general fund?
Remember, we talked about these different things, like what the village just presented us with, the safety path repairs. Is now the time to redo that, or should we look at it sometime in '18?
We're going to have, we're going to be talking about this in October to solidify any raises or whatever. So, why don't we think about all this?
Well, this will get something on the books. Myself personally, we just purchased a couple pieces of property. I like to kind of wait a little bit on these requests and start seeing how that starts shaping up.
Which requests are you talking about, Joe?
The $150,000 in the safety path repairs.
Well, I don't have a problem waiting on that, you know that.
I just want to take a look at how things are going to come together yet.
Jack?
This proposed budget and expenditures for 2018 does not impact the general fund equity that we have today, which that money could be taken out of?
You're talking about the fund balance and whatever.
Fund balance?
No.
It could then be taken out of those fund balances?
Next month. We'll do it next month.
Yes.
But this just gets something on the books. My question is, do we want to look at this now or tackle it later?
Well, I would tackle it later.
October.
I make a motion to approve the recommended 2018 general fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $2,363,202, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at .9265 mils. Attach the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Yes.
Does that mean that the monies are, they can be reallocated, correct?
Correct.
Meaning that we've allocated $200,000 for contribution to MERS, but that can be changed?
Just because the money is in the line item doesn't mean you can spend it.
This gets something on the books.
Okay.
You have to have a motion by the township board to spend that money.
And one further question. Today's millage rate is zero, is nine?
Two.
Two. And it's going up to 9265?
No, it's less than that.
It's got to be.
373 right now going down.
Is that what?
.9373.
It's gone down.
So, it's going down.
Thank you.
I'm confused.
No.
Where are we? Roll call.
Yes, stop doing it.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer, supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Police contracting.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended 2018 police contracting fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at $2,694,130, based on the property tax millage rate to be levied at 3.8172 mils. Attach your property only. Yes, the spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Questions?
Yes.
Yes.
The current millage is three point...
Was it 87? Was it eight seven?
I'm sorry I'm asking, but you know, it is pretty prudent that we have dropped every millage so far.
Well, it's not by our choice.
It's by a little rollback.
It's by rule, but we're doing things going in the right direction that we can still budget and have a fund balance.
Correct.
Yes.
That's because our taxable value is increasing.
Yes. And we are growing in the community.
And you guys are pretty tight. You watch a lot of the expenditures.
It would be helpful if each of the budgets had the current millage rate at the top of them.
I agree.
Note that, Deanna.
It's on the general fund budget, but...
I don't have that page open.
I don't either.
Three point eight five seven.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're on the police contracting.
Yes.
Need to vote? Do it.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
And Trustee Dur.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen road fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at three hundred and sixty-three thousand five twenty-three. That's attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
And Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. Did I get to do it twice?
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
It's all right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen telecommunications fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at thirty-nine thousand three fifteen. Attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen building permit fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at four hundred and fifty-five thousand two eighty-two. Attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported or seconded, whatever. Roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
And Trustee Payne.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen safety path fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at fifty thousand three twenty. Attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen building site fund budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at three hundred and twenty-five thousand seven thirty-eight. Attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
And Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
North Oakland Transportation Authority.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended two thousand eighteen North Oakland Transportation Authority budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at one million four thirty-seven one sixty-nine based on the property tax military to be levied at point two four two seven mils. Attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommended two thousand eighteen North Oakland Transportation Authority budget with revenues and expenditures balancing at one million four thirty-seven one sixty-nine based on the property tax military to be levied at point two four two seven mils. Attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd move to set the two thousand eighteen parks debt millage rate at point zero 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 two one of a mil unauthorized to be placed on the December two thousand seventeen tax roll.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, second to be levied and collected December one, two thousand seventeen. The general property tax and all real and personal property from the township upon the current tax roll and allocate a value of point nine two five six, point nine two six five mils for township operations. Voter authorized millage of point eight two nine five mils for parks and recreation, three point eight one seven two mils for police contracting, unincorporated portion of the township only, three point four zero zero eight fire operations EMS and advanced life support, point six five seven one mils, point seven zero one two mils for Oxford Public Library, point two four two seven mils for North Oakland Transportation Authority, point two one mils for parks bond debt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
I move to adopt the two thousand eighteen general appropriations act as amended.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Question?
Yes, the reason for the amendment is, let me show you. Page five. For the fire EMS and advanced life support operations, there should be eight thousand dollars of interest in the line item there and the opening fund balance will be reduced by eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
Is that just a clerical thing, Curtis?
Yeah. It's clerical, but it's part of the document.
We've already got everything done? Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
I move to approve a five percent salary increase for Assistant Chief Dave Preach effective for the two thousand eighteen fiscal year.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded. Questions? Roll call.
Clerk Wright, no. Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Treasure Nichols.
No.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
I move to approve a three percent salary increase for the fire department office manager position effective for the two thousand eighteen fiscal year.
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions? Yes, Jack?
We had the current and future rate for Dave Preach. We don't have the current and future rate for finance manager's position. I didn't know if that was, where that lied.
It's in their budget.
Okay.
Right here.
It's included. Got it. Thank you.
Roll call.
Oh. Just want to clarify the motion to make sure that we're doing it for the position, correct?
Yeah.
Because for those positions, are we?
Yep. Mr. Preach is for his contract. This is for the position. We have a contract with this employee too.
No, we do not.
We went through all that. Okay.
Roll call.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
I move to approve the two thousand eighteen step system using the multiplier of three point zero percent. Create a step system effective for the first payroll in fiscal year two thousand eighteen as presented. Attached a spreadsheet as appendix to the minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported. Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for the two thousand eighteen wages and salaries for Oxford Township with a great adjustment to the clerical to the treasurer from grade two, where she had step two, grade two step two, to grade three step one.
Support. Second.
Moved and, we'll do, Margie as the second. Questions? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, no. Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis.
Under the election inspector pay, it should be noted that the election inspector pay is not, the money doesn't come out of the general fund? Correct, Curtis?
It does if there is a required election. If it's a special election like the school election coming up, that would be reimbursed by the schools.
How about a presidential?
Presidential is absorbed by the community.
Question, Bill?
Yes.
At the last Wednesday meeting, Algen proposed that the election officials get an increase in their wages. Margie and I had already met for the budget reasons for performance raises and moving position raises up. We didn't discuss this or change that in any way. So I just now looked down and I'm trying to see if we changed them.
We discussed this at last week's meeting.
Yeah.
Though. And what it came to was, it seemed to be a consensus that the chair would go to two hundred, the computer person a hundred and seventy-five, and all others remain at one fifty.
Right. Does that reflect that in this budget? I don't see it. It does not.
No, it's reflecting at a three percent.
Yep.
Have we done all the wage recommendations?
Yes, but I'm gonna change the job description. I'd like to make a motion to change the job description from clerical to the treasurer to assistant, administrative assistant to the treasurer with the new attached job description.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, no. Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. Now, have we done all the raises for everyone?
Did, did you adapt this resolution for?
Yeah, the resolution for the 2018 wages.
Okay.
Yes.
Just cleaned up the last one to make sure we changed the job description along with that adjustment.
Gotcha.
So we're all good? Onto?
Election stuff.
Election inspector pay.
I move to increase the election inspector pay, the chairperson to two hundred dollars, the computer person, if that's the official title, to a hundred and seventy-five, and all others to remain at a hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved and supported. I will say that these people do a wonderful job. They're here for the better part of a week, it seems like.
Yeah.
I know they're here from early in the morning till possibly twelve and one o'clock at night, and, uh...
They're doing it as a community service.
Yes, so, they're, it's well deserved. Yes.
I just wondered if the board would consider that, uh, raising pay to two hundred dollars for the two individuals that come back to the receiving board, because that increases their time anywhere from fifteen to eighteen hours for the, for the, uh...
So those, my question is, those two people would be, um, at the current one hundred and fifty dollar rate?
Not necessarily. Usually it's the chairperson that comes back, so their rate would not change.
Okay.
Be two hundred dollars. Let's say it would be an inspector that would come back with that person, and you have to have opposing parties come back for the receiving board.
Okay.
Check in all the election data to make sure that it's all, all sufficient and, and the balance is out, and...
I don't want to complicate this, but do you want to have a fourth step in there that states, uh...
I would, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, 'cause...
From, uh, from the aspect of my position that...
Go ahead and make that motion.
That would actually, uh, compensate them. Usually it would probably run anywhere for probably two to three to four hours extra.
Right.
With the other people.
Yeah, I've been here.
And it's only one, one of the ins, one of the inspectors that would be coming back.
As long as the chairperson came back, yes.
If the chairperson comes back, only one inspector.
Correct.
If the chairperson doesn't come back, you would have two inspectors. So anyone who works above and beyond the polling hours would be eligible for two hundred dollars pay?
Correct. That's what my...
That's my motion.
We already have motion on, on the books.
Look at that, Kelly.
Oh, okay.
That's added to the motion.
Can we add that to the motion?
That's added to the motion.
Oh, that's...
And then we need to second, resecond.
Who seconded? You seconded?
I reseconded.
Okay.
Okay, uh, for our poor, uh, secretary, could someone please restate that?
Okay.
For... I'm always good at restating later on at night.
I move to increase the election inspector pay, the chairperson to two hundred, the computer person to a hundred and seventy-five dollars, all others to remain at one hundred and fifty, except for the person that has to, what is this thing called technically that they do?
Except for the election inspectors that are coming back to the township office as part of the receiving board.
And anyone coming back to the rece, as part of the receiving board will also receive two hundred dollars.
Very good, Margie. Thank you. Is there a support for, I mean, that's already been supported for that? Roll call.
All right. Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Onto fire department. Pete?
Board of members, I talked to you back in this, um, where in spring that we were going to be applying for a safer grant to hire a recruitment retention, uh, position. Uh, we applied for the grant, sat there and waited the entire time, and as it worked out, we ended up being probably one of the last grants that they passed out. Um, they didn't fund it as much as what we originally had, had applied for, but it does come through for a four-year position. Um, it covers the rate of pay. It also covers their benefits for the four-year, um, four-year time. Um, it also includes as part of that, that hopefully when, as we hire paid-on-call individuals, it'll help pay for their books, for the classes, and it'll also help pay for the physicals for those paid-on-call people that we would be getting. Total amount of the grant is three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Um, what I'm looking for tonight is permission for us to go ahead and accept the grant, and then we have other details to work out and negotiation part of it going forward.
Who do these people supervise? Would it be paid-on-call, new kids?
The majority of people they will be working with is recruiting, um, new paid-on-call members, and then they will be working with them directly as a mentor and, quote, supervising them on the, um, on the scene, um, in casers. If it's a medical, they can, the recruitment officer would be able to go along and work with them as a mentor on the scene to actually train them and work with them, uh, would actually be working as part of teaching some of the classes that they attend and helping them get through their entire FTL, um, portion of the...
Does that include driving the equipment and?
They will minimally be a, they are fire-trained, EMS-trained. Um, per the grant, they are not to be, or not intended to be, a full-time firefighter slash EMS person. Their job is to be recruitment retention, but then in the event of a, you know, large fire or something, that we need somebody actually to drive a truck, then obviously that person is available to drive the truck. Um, and at the same time, he will be training on that time too, because he could get the, the new guy, the rookies with them and mentor them as far as, you know, how to run the pumps and work with them, that sort of stuff.
Yes. Um, I saw, uh, the job description and kind of had some questions on it, and one is relating to salary, union, non-union, things like that. Um, I'd like to get those cleared up before we post and hire somebody for that position.
Okay.
And I have a motion I'd read, then.
Go ahead, Jack. You've got the floor.
I move to accept the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response safer grant on behalf of the Oxford Fire Department and authorize Fire Chief Peter Schultz and/or Supervisor William Dunn to sign any necessary grant documents. Further, any additional funding required in addition to the safer grant funds awarded shall be paid from the Oxford Fire Department budget. The, the job description will be detailed and approved by Township Supervisor William Dunn and Fire Chief Peter Schultz before the position is posted or filled. Second.
Moved and seconded. Pete, in case everything falls through, can this grant be returned or turned down?
Yes. Regretfully, but yes, we can, we can return it.
We're not going to fill a position unless we get the money.
Let's say the money, when, after the money's gone.
After the four years.
Go ahead.
You could either apply for a new grant.
If, depending on how the United States government keeps, you know, whether or not they keep the grant programs alive, which we hopefully do, um, hopefully then we could be, potentially apply for a, another grant, or if it was such a, doing such a great job for us and really beneficial, if it was, you know, making it a full-time position that we could continue on in the future, then we would look at it at that time as, you know, hopefully creating a full-time position out of it. But the main thrust right now is a four-year position, so on the outside, at the end of four years, the three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and six dollars are gone, and the employee would be released at that point.
You have for that time?
Correct.
I know that it's hard to get paid-on-call. Chief Morowski is screaming daily, uh, about getting these and retaining these people, but I just added that verbiage in there so that we took care and had time to, number one, secure the grant, and number two, verify that the wording met with our collective bargaining, collective bargaining unit. Yeah. And if that's clear, that's the way we should go.
Yes, Elgin.
I'd just like to comment that, uh, I, I think it's a great thing that the chief, or the fire chief has done to go after this grant. It's a considerable amount of money. It's an educational thing and a good thing for the community.
I'd have to give credit to Captain Giles is the one that actually wrote the grant for us. Uh, it was a collaborative effort of multiple people in the office that worked with him and consulted with him, but he was actually the one, you can see his name on there, was actually the one that wrote the grant, so...
Knowing you, I would suspect that you would give credit. Thank you.
He deserved it.
Roll call. There's no other questions?
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Dur.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Thank you, board. Uh, one last thing, I'd like to remind everybody, October first is our Fire Prevention Open House on October first, Sunday, so I would like to see everyone there to come in and enjoy cider and donuts and see all the stuff that we have, all of our toys to, to look at.
I did that for twenty years. I don't have to do it anymore.
We moved a couple of the chairs and tables around, so you need to come back and see.
It's totally different than what you're used to.
Public comment. Any public comment? Camera lady, got any comment? Good. Uh, Board of trustees, I'm going to start with Joe. I think he's got an announcement to make.